Raise and join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Please note for the record that all council members and authority members are present.
Okay, so adoption of the agenda, we actually have, are going to remove an item which is under old business. Item B, which is Consider Adoption of Resolution Number HA 2018-02, a resolution, the Brisbane Housing Authority of the City of Brisbane approving a sale of lots identified by County Assessor Partial Numbers. And city manager, that's going to go to what?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove that from tonight's agenda and we will schedule a meeting with the negotiator sometime in the fall.
Okay, alright, so item B is removed. Alright, so do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'll make so the motion, but then can we also have a report out from closed session?
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. City Attorney, want to report out from closed session, please?
Yes, there were three items on the closed session tonight concerning the contract city attorney performance evaluation, conference with real property negotiator concerning certain property by the SPR easement, and also potential litigation discussion. There was no action taken on any of those items tonight, Mr. Mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. Alright, that brings us to oral communications number one. This is any item that is not on the agenda, and I don't have any slips up here, so does anybody wish to address the council on any items not on the agenda? Come on up, Luke. It's alright, you don't have to turn your slip in, all.
Luke Bouchard, Brisbane resident. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, it's a pleasure and a privilege to address you. I would like some details as to what was deleted from tonight's agenda and what the outcome of those discussions were. Thank you.
Okay, alright. So we have Presentation A, Designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. And I do have a proclamation here, and this is proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane designating July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the City of Brisbane. Whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation Areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Brisbane recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, now therefore be resolved at the City Council, the City of Brisbane, that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month, this day, 19th July, 2018. And Stuart, oh, okay, very good. Here we go.
I know you guys have a full agenda ahead of you tonight, so I'll keep it brief. But we did compile some highlights from the last two years of our Parks and Recreation Programs and events that we wanted to share with you. I'm certain you'll recognize several faces throughout the slideshow, but we hope that you also see the memories that are made through those experiences. So enjoy, and thank you all for your ongoing support of Parks and Recreation for our Brisbane residents.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more presentation, which is Item B, which is San Mateo County Home for All Presentation.
Wait, are we going to watch a slideshow?
Pardon?
Slideshow.
Oh, we had to wait for this. Picture's worth a thousand words, could have saved me reading that resolution. Okay, thank you for that. So, Item B, which is Presentation from San Mateo County Home for All Presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Pat Brown, and I'm here tonight representing the collaborative that is the Home for All Initiative in San Mateo County. I have with me Ken Cole, who is the Director of Housing for San Mateo County, and Jessica Mullen, who is the Project Manager for Home for All. And we're here primarily to respond to any questions that you might have. Peggy Jensen was here a couple of weeks ago and made a presentation to you about the Community Engagement Pilot Projects that we've been working on for the past year. And I think she told you at that point that there was an opportunity for Brisbane to participate in the future in a project like that. I know that she received a sort of an outline of what that might look like if you decided to go forward with, become a pilot city for the second year of the pilots. And so I'm here really, and we're available tonight to say we would be very happy to work with Brisbane if you chose to be part of the project, and if you have questions, specific questions, we could address those tonight. But I guess the point that I would make about all of the projects is these are truly collaborative projects. They are three-way team partnerships between the city, the Home for All team, and our consultant Common Knowledge, who are community engagement specialists. And we have worked very closely in all of the four cities that we've worked on this year. So I'm open for questions or comments, if you'd like.
Council questions, comments?
Probably sometime in the future.
Yeah, yeah, that was going to be my question. So you're talking about, you know, doing a pilot program schedule for next year. What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
What kind of timeframe? Well, that would be up to you, but what our thought was that it would probably kick off, probably January. We'd find late in the year, you get into the holidays, and it's not the best time to do that. We'd be doing some preliminary conversations, as we did in the cities this year. But the real work would begin in January and probably go on for six to eight months, a period of planning and implementation. In the model we described for you, there are two community meetings. The first community meeting is, and those meetings, I would say, are aimed at gathering together non-traditional members of the committee, those that are not already involved in working with the community on whatever decisions are coming up related to housing. So there is an emphasis on outreach, engagement, and really inviting people to be part of a conversation. The conversation is people talking to each other, as well as the city listening to those comments. And there's some very specific things that we've learned about that structure this year that have contributed to the success in the four cities that we've worked on so far.
Great, and then besides staff time, you know, helping you to put on the workshops, there would be no other cost to the city? This is something that the county would provide, all of the expenses?
In fact, there is a grant that would be available to the city, about $30,000. That was provided to offset the cost of community engagement efforts. We won't, we won't deny that there is a lot of work that goes into us, as well as material costs, but the material costs are the lesser part of it. There's a lot of staff work that is required, and a lot of community leadership work. Members of the council have been involved in all of the cities that we've worked on. But there would be a grant, and then there would be the support from the Home for All team and from a Common Knowledge team as well.
Great, well, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. It's been a while since I've seen you.
It's been a very long time, yes. I was trying to think back, probably 15 years at least, so it's nice to see you.
Do you still do work with the Peninsula Conflict Resolution?
I've retired twice since then, but still doing the same kind of work.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, that brings us to Consent Calendar. Is there any items council wishes to remove?
Make a motion to adopt items A through F.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Alright, this brings us to Continued Public Hearing, which is Item A, Consider Adoption Resolution Number 2018-61, certifying the environmental, final environmental impact report and adopting the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. Item B, which is Consider Adoption of Resolution 2018-62, approving Baylands General Plan Amendment, GP 1-18, and a statement of overriding considerations, and directing that the General Plan Amendment be put to the voters, November 6, 2018 election. And Item C, which is Consider Adoption Resolution Number 2018-63, placing the General Plan Amendment, GP 18, on November ballot for voter consideration. Okay. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. There's a couple follow-up items from the last hearing on this. And I'll just kind of briefly touch on a couple items, and I'll turn the presentation over to Lloyd, and I believe Stuart has some comments. The primary change that I want to discuss tonight is there has been some discussion and concern over the use of the phrase "mixed use" in the title of the district, the new Baylands land use designation. So what you have before you is handed to the dais as a revision to the actual text of the GP, the text amendment, GP 118, and I believe Ingrid can probably put that up on the screen. And it's hard to read, but basically what we're doing is eliminating any references to mixed use in the designation title. So we're re-designating the Baylands subarea as Baylands Plan Development. That's going to be its official title. And any references to mixed use in the title of that designation have been stricken from the text. And having had the opportunity to make the revisions on the map, the same revisions will be made on the General Plan Land Use Diagram as well. I'd entertain any questions you have on that. Otherwise, I would turn it over to Lloyd. There were some questions about floor area ratio and how commercial could be distributed across the site relative to other projects in Brisbane, and he has some analysis of that for you.
Okay, any questions on the revision of General Plan Amendment?
I have none.
And we do have a slide that compares a couple different projects.
Okay.
And there it is. As you look at floor area ratio, and what floor area ratio does is it measures the amount of building square footage to the square footage of a site. So a floor area ratio of one means that for every square foot of the size of the site, there's a square foot of building. As you look at the Baylands, we looked at both 5 million and 7 million square feet. With 7 million square feet of non-residential use, of commercial use on the Baylands, we'd be looking at a floor area ratio of about .92, if that were only 5 million, .66. Now, that compares to, there was some discussion at the last meeting about the Cove at Oyster Point. And if you look at that building area, about 1 million square feet of building, but a floor area ratio of about 1.94. And what you see as you look at that project is a mass of buildings. As we compare to some other projects, the Sierra Point within the City of Brisbane, about .76, is that would be built out. Sierra Point within South San Francisco, about .43, but substantially less. And Crocker Park, which is primarily one-story buildings, fairly low intensity at about .43. So what you'll see in the Baylands at about 7 million square feet would be about half of the building area per square foot of site that you see now at Oyster Point, and slightly more than what Sierra Point would be built out at.
Okay. Any questions on that?
So, I just, with this graphic up, I think it's very good to have. But when you say it's what Sierra Point will be when it's built out, and it is not built out yet, it's probably halfway built out? So, do we have what the floor area ratio is currently, so people really have an idea of what it looks like?
Yeah, what you see on the ground right now at Sierra Point would be a little bit less than the .76, but not that much less. So maybe down .7, or down around the .66.
But, but don't we still have five buildings to go at Sierra Point, plus the hotel towers, plus the other building?
Correct. And remember, it's a ratio of building area to square footage, so when I'm giving you the existing, I'm not counting the empty square footage that's not built on yet. Those would be the buildings that are in place and the sites that they are on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, go ahead. Alright.
So, there was a question that was asked concerning what is the financial impact of the potential development at different ranges, and this is something that Kaiser Marston has done in the past for us. I've used their information. As you can see by the chart, as we've talked about in the past, that residential units, you know, would anticipate having a net impact on our city's general fund. Commercial would have a net positive on our general fund. Four and a half million square feet would have, would be positive about $3 million. Six and a half million square feet would have about $4.2 million positive impact. And then hotel rooms, and if anybody ever asks me, I love hotels as a finance director, that would have the biggest impact on us. It would be, we would anticipate 500,000 square feet would be about 700 hotel rooms. And the reason I had said that was because that was a similar ratio to what we currently have with the square footage and the hotel rooms that we currently have out at Sierra Point. And that's a little bit lower than that. And that would be about 3.4 million square, net positive. And then there is a fixed loss of revenues due to development. So we do get some revenues off of that site right now that as it gets built out, we would lose. So that 1.26 gets lost, and then everything else would happen after the, after everything gets built out. And then I have another slide as a next one, which talks about what our outstanding liabilities are. This is something that I talked about at the budget hearings. So as I've told you, we have about $20 million in unfunded liability in PERS, about $8 million of unfunded liability in OPEB, and that was based, PERS is based off of a 2016 valuation. It's probably gotten a little bit better since 17 and 18 have been, have been above their numbers. That's probably got a little bit better. But OPEB was based off of their June 30 evaluation. And then the last slide I have, it talks to the general fund capital projects that were part of the discussions last year, or earlier this year, I can't remember when we did it. There was about $13 million, $14 million worth of capital projects that the city council did not, were not able to afford. There was $385,000 in council-generated projects, about $1 million in public works-generated projects. The big portion, as you know, is our storm drains. There's about $11.6 million in storm drain projects, about $490,000 in Parks and Recreation area, and about $160,000 in the police department. So, you know, one of the questions I think was asked of me was to say, you know, what would be the impact of the development, and what were the kinds of uses when it comes to, you know, our unfunded liabilities and capital projects that might be able to, that would absorb that revenue? And that's my presentation. If there are any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So Stuart, in that, the previous slide, or two slides earlier, you know, so the revenue that would be generated, that goes into the city's general fund, correct? And then the council can allocate those funds to anything that it sees fit, correct? It doesn't have to be just for the Baylands, it could be for anything in town?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, okay. You have anything else from staff? That's it? Council have any questions for staff and anything? I have one, I want to ask for, you know, I received a question from the community, and it had to do with jobs housing balance. And it's come up a few times, but they got this question again, so... John, can you give a description of jobs housing balance on what it is? And, you know, is it a law? What, you know, exactly, what does that mean?
Well, jobs housing balance is kind of usually looked at in a regional basis in terms of how many jobs are available in an area, and how many housing units. And I think it's really getting at the core issue of can you provide enough housing for people to work locally so they don't have to in-commute? And in the Bay Area in particular, you have people commuting from the valley and from very extensive commuting. There's no sort of set formula in terms of an ideal or preferred jobs housing balance. And I think it works both at a regional and sub-regional scale. For example, in this particular area, you know, you have Brisbane, and then you have, whatever happens on the Baylands, you're going to have numerous projects in San Francisco that add significant residential units. And they may be within a separate jurisdiction, so if you're looking at jobs housing balance on a jurisdictional basis, it might not, you know, it wouldn't count. But if you look at that as a functional area in terms of where people might find close employment, you know, I think sub-regionally, the jobs housing balance would look at those kind of continuities and connections as part of the overall equation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to take some comments from the public. I have one, two, three, four, five, six slips regarding this. Are there any more slips? Does anybody wish to speak on this? Because if I get a lot of slips, we're going to limit the amount of time. But if not, you know, a lot of these folks haven't spoke yet, so... Seven slips, so... Put a slip in, okay, if you've already spoken, I am going to limit your time, because I don't know what else. Submit a slip. Okay, for those who haven't spoken, I'm going to give you the five minutes, but for those who have, it's going to be two minutes. Okay, so, I now have eight slips. Okay, so first up, Tom Heintz.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is a sad situation. If you approve this EIR and the zoning changes, against all the opposition that has spoke against this already, and you're willing to change this for foreign investors who don't live here, who don't work here, who may, most likely, were not even told that they're investing in toxic land, and that there may be no return. Sad. Is there a stronger word than sad? There are no guarantees in speculation. You win some, you lose some. It's legalized gambling, and you don't always win. Speaking of investors, you have right here in Brisbane, both presently and in the recent past, many, many people who have invested in Brisbane. Dozens of people who actually read the EIR, who commented numerous times on its inadequacies. In many places inadequate, yet you seem prepared to approve it. Sad. Time, money, and wisdom put into a general plan to protect people from living on toxic land. And yet, you're willing to give the people of Brisbane and your own planning commission the finger. That's what you're going to say if you approve these resolutions tonight. You're giving us the finger. I think you all know what that means. Sad. Profits over people. Sad, really sad. Actually, it's quite tragic. That's the word I want, tragic. It's really tragic. It's really tragic that you're willing to let foreign investors who have no guarantee prevail over your own citizens. Sad. Tragic. I know your excuses. This is capitalism. It's the way it's always been done. Well, that's precisely why we're in the predicament we are. This country is on a downhill slope because of profits over people. And I equate this to Trump standing next to Putin and what he said, and didn't defend our country. And you're not defending our citizens. But you have the power to make some changes. If we don't start valuing people over profits, we're doomed. We're doomed as a community. We're doomed as a city. We're doomed as a country, economically as a country. You're right. That's the way it's always been done. If you don't start making changes, we're really doomed, people. You know what they say about people who don't stand up for their convictions? Will you stand up for the people of Brisbane? Your constituents? Or are you willing to let foreign speculators win profits over people? Foreign speculators who solely want to profit. They don't live here. They have no interest in Brisbane. Don't let greed win again. Please. Stand up for your people. Don't approve a zoning change into perpetuity for a project that can't even get water. Don't let greed win again. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Kim Folian?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I just, I'm Kim Folian, Brisbane resident. I just wanted to express my support for the general plan amendment, and I'm glad the commercial was increased to ensure positive revenue to the city as the economy changes. And regarding the educational study you're considering this evening, I don't support this. The city has no control, authority, or influence over school district boundaries, and this is an unnecessary distraction from the Baylands, which is your responsibility. Merger was already studied and shot down, so doing another study which will reveal, which will yield the same results already available to you doesn't make sense. An effort to create a Brisbane Unified School District was also attempted around 2011. It failed because it would have violated at least two state education codes and wasn't politically feasible based on who actually does control these decisions, the school boards, and ultimately voters in the districts impacted. I'd also like to remind you that when the study was proposed last year, it angered the Bay Shore Elementary School District Superintendent, and she made it very clear they were not interested in merger or your involvement at all. This study is a waste of money, city staff, and city council resources. City council and city staff resources will be needed for public outreach and education to ensure passage of this general plan amendment, which is critical for Brisbane's financial solvency. There's also, there's already an effort to encourage voters to vote no on the general plan amendment. Please don't compromise this very important vote with an educational distraction that you have no authority over and which will result in more backlash for Brisbane. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Boris Lipkin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Boris Lipkin. A few months ago, I stepped in as the Acting Northern California Regional Director for the California High-Speed Rail Authority, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide, comment, and clear up some confusion from the July 12 hearing about our project and what our plans call for with regard to the Bayland site. We wrote a letter on June 20 laying some of this out, but I figured I would come and, you know, help provide a little bit of specific points, just as you're considering this item tonight. So the July 12 meeting, there was some confusion about whether our plans called for us to operate service to San Francisco or to have Caltrain operate for us. And I just want to make it really clear that we do plan to operate service all the way to San Francisco using the existing Caltrain. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better? Okay, I apologize. Using the existing Caltrain corridor. So, in fact, what our 2018 business plan calls for is that we would start service all the way to San Francisco. And what that means is that we will need a light maintenance facility and a rail yard in the San Francisco to San Jose section. As you know, we've been and continue to evaluate a light maintenance facility at the Bayland site, either on the west side of the site or on the east side of the site. This is a, maybe where the confusion came from, is this is a change from our 2016 business plan where we had sort of, we had called for starting service to San Jose and then extending to San Francisco, which meant that there was more variation where we could use a maintenance facility. And the 2018 plan was starting service to San Francisco, this is where we're going to have to be. So this is part of our environmental clearance that we're working on right now. We're planning to complete that by 2021, and then we would go into right away acquisition and kind of construction from there. The key decision for us is in 2019, we'll pick a preferred alternative. So what that means is that we'll, at that point, have the decision about what our preference is between the west and the east side of the site. So I just wanted to, you know, appreciate the opportunity to be here and to continue to coordinate with the city as, you know, we do have some potential conflicts that we need to resolve and certainly want to work with, with the city to how we can move everything forward. But I want to make sure you had the most accurate information as you're making this decision tonight.
Thank you, Boris.
Can I, can I ask?
Sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Lipkin a question? So you said that you expected to have a preferred alternative in 2019?
Correct.
Any idea when?
Yes. So for this section, it would be, and I'm just, I didn't want to give you the wrong date, so, end of, towards the end of the year of 2019. So I think December timeline, and I know you're on our local policymaker group, and so I'll have more information for you at that, at that meeting. So, but that's, that's the plan that we've adopted.
Staff have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Lot of communication. All right. Greg Anderson?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you for hearing our comments tonight. I want to bring up three points about this proposed GP 118 that you're going to be deciding on tonight. I don't know what you have in your minds yet. We'll find out until after public commentary is closed, but GP 118 isn't ready to go to the voters without some important changes. First of all, we have to ask ourselves, why are we doing this? This is very toxic land. It's very expensive to build on. Anything that you put here is not going to be inexpensive. The reason we're building here is because of the housing crisis. If we don't have a plan that's going to reduce pressure on the housing price, crisis, then we should not begin. With the current financial plan that you've let forward, we had a definition tonight of what jobs and housing balance is, but we haven't had any economic study about whether this plan will increase or decrease the job housing balance. But if you just look at the numbers, jobs are going to vary greatly depending on what kind of businesses go in there. But with 5 million square feet, you're not likely to improve the jobs housing, housing to jobs balance. You're probably going to make things worse for the housing crisis. You need to make sure that we're doing this for a reason before we go to the voters. If you don't, Brisbane's going to vote no on this. Why would we take the risk if we're not even making any improvements? The second thing I want to talk about is the zoning map. For years, the incorrect, inconsistent zoning map has been a thorn in Brisbane's side, and for years, we were told we just have to wait until it's time to decide on the Baylands. And here we are. It's time to decide on the Baylands. And what do we have? We have a zoning map with only one zone in it. Now, it was a huge improvement to remove the words "mixed use" from the zoning map, but that's not going nearly far enough. The land in the Baylands is not uniform. It's different. The east side is massively different than the west side, and OU1 and OU2 are different areas. These three areas should all be zoned separately. You can't simply rely on the general plan to distinguish what goes where. I don't know why we're even listening to this anymore. Do we remember SB 167? SB 167 has already passed, and it already has language in it that says specifically that zoning maps prevail over the general plan. And I'm not asking you to go back and legally analyze 167 against your plan, but what I'm trying to make here is that we have other legislations like SB 827, which didn't pass, but is going to come back. These laws are going to keep coming, and if you deliberately put a flaw in your plan, then we're going to see more creative wording in legislation. So let's start with a plan that's what we're intending to do. Zone for what we're intending to do with three separate zones. And the final item that I'm going to talk about tonight, I've talked to you about this before, it's liquefaction zone. You can't prove that this is a no liquefaction zone before November. There's just not time to do that. So if you're going to bring this to the voters, you have to say in the plan that you're going to build this as if it was a high liquefaction plan. As has been said by many experts for over a decade, everything's high liquefaction. We have to be really clear on that. If you don't get these three things right, Brisbane is going to vote no on this, GP 118. And why would they vote yes? It's not sufficient for you to say that Brisbane's going to vote yes because a bad man's going to come and play Godzilla and stomp on our town and make things terrible. We have to do this, if we're going to do this, it has to be the right thing. And we can't go along with it just because it's something we think we're saving ourselves from something bad. We have a different escape plan. We would not want to go in and sue and waste all of our money and destroy the city. That's ridiculous. Your other alternative has already been pointed out to you. Ray Miller brought this up months ago. If we get into a situation where it's not feasible, we can simply disincorporate the Baylands and make it somebody else's problem. And that's what we should do if we can't make a plan that works. But before we get to that point, let's try to make a plan that works. Separate the zones into separate areas, plan for the liquefaction, and make sure that this is actually going to do something for the jobs housing imbalance. If you can't make a plan that clearly works, don't start. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Nancy Loxamana?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I very much appreciate all the hard work that you've done. I did stay up and listen to the last hour and a half of last week's July 12 meeting. I felt quite relieved and informed of, especially all of the answers that the city staff gave to a lot of the questions that were raised last week. And I believe they will become very important as we move into, hopefully, an approval of the general plan amendment and move forward for a vote, which I know you're very much in support of doing, to put it to the people vote. I'm just specifically here to restate my belief that the 7 million commercial space is the right thing to do. And I think seeing all of the numbers on the screen of the liabilities and the challenges that we have as a city really show and that we have to be beyond just keeping net positive to this project. We can use the Baylands to really take care of a lot of the things that the city of Brisbane would like to do. I was thinking about Colma the other day, 1,500, you know, 1,500 citizens and 1,005 dead, if you really wanted to know. But, I mean, that town is, from what I know, very well taken care of, and it's not from the cemeteries because they're nonprofit. I mean, it's a little casino that helps pay for recreation for all the children in their town. Beautiful police station, all these things that a town would like to have beyond just a little area that they're, they're covering for, for coverage for, like, the things that happened with casinos in a town. But they do benefit from things like that. So I, I do want to re-encourage you to consider and keep the 7 million in the general plan amendment because I think it does get us beyond just net positive. It will help the entire town. Thank you.
Nancy. Kyle Corbett?
There. Honorable Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to start really quick by saying that Brisbane is awesome. We've, this is our first summer here, and I just, I don't know why every city doesn't have the city, the summer concert series, but that's like definitely my family's favorite thing we're doing this summer. So I, I really love Brisbane. I, I'm a renter here, and maybe some people think that that makes me less of a voice or, or less, you know, important to the future, but the reason I'm a renter is because I can't afford to live here. I've got a family, and we, we, we want to stay here, but it's, it's, it's hard to see the future how that's possible, the way things are going right now. So my, the, my ask, the thing that I'd, I'd like hopefully to do is as you're considering this, I'm really glad that this is, that we're moving towards a vote. I'm really glad that you're, you're working on this, and I'm so thankful for that. And just, I, I guess what I'm asking is that as you work with, as you decide how you want to do this, keep in mind that there's people like me who would love to be able to stay in Brisbane, and the sooner that these things get built, the more possible that's going to be. And I loved, I didn't know all the numbers. It's, it's amazing that the, with the commercial real estate and everything, that this is going to be such a big revenue positive for the city as well. And so I guess all I'm saying is, the faster this gets done, the better it is for everyone. So hopefully, we can keep moving forward quickly. Thanks.
Kyle. Dan Carter?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. Thank you, as always, for your service to the community. You guys really signed up for something this time. So I want to say, I am saying yes, I would love to see this on the ballot. I know in the past, there have, we've had a general plan, and now we're looking at the reality of where we are today. We're trying to do the best with the information we've gotten, and I know all of you have studied hard, and this thing has been looked forwards, backwards, and sideways, and I appreciate that. I believe that we're in a place where we have to sit down and make this decision, and a vote, I think, is going to help that happen. I believe that the amount of commercial, the 7 million being fiscally responsible, we have to, if this is going to happen, we have to make sure that it's not a negative thing. We've seen a few things in our town, like the pool, and a few things that have been negative fiscally, and that's really irresponsible on our part, and it's happened in the past, and we can't continue that. And, you know, I've heard said that if we put this on the ballot, it'll be defeated, and if it is, then that's how the people vote. But that's why we have the vote. That's the whole purpose. If we knew how it was going to come out, we wouldn't need a vote, but we don't. So in, in my opinion, with what I've heard, and I know you guys have heard more than I have, and I appreciate all the time you put into it, I think it's going to a vote is a good thing to do, and being proactive is our only option at this point. And I believe putting this to a vote and doing our best to do the best for the Baylands with the most, the best information that we have is to have this vote. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Michelle Salmon?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I hesitated to come tonight even because I feel like it's a done deal, but I hope that it's not. And I do have questions about why there's no cap on the amount of square footage you're allowing for housing, especially since now that you're encouraging low-density housing all the way down to Main Street. And that could mean housing units that are, you know, 2, 3, 4,000 square feet. And that's not what this was about when you initiated this rush rush. That was, this was about high-density affordable housing that was transit-oriented, and somehow or another, it's mutated into this big, blown, open plan. Not happy about that. And you heard tonight that high-speed rail is indeed not a myth. It's a reality that's coming. But other than that, I just want to say that I totally agree with what, everything that Greg said. I mean, my God, I don't think this is ready at all to put to the vote. I don't think it's ready- I don't think it's ready for a plan. One big orange swath across the whole map, which was really only just given to you right before the meeting, I don't think is what I would call an adequate general plan amendment in any way, shape, or form, and I'm very disappointed about that. And I also don't think you realize just how much, I don't think people really have a conception of just how much 10 million square feet is, because that's what we're talking about, really. 7 million square feet of non-housing and up to possibly 3 million or more square feet of housing. I calculated the housing amount based on what was in the DSP for the EIR, and it equaled 2.563 million square feet for 2,200 units, based on the ratio that it had for the 4,434 units. So that's like between 2 and 1/2 and 3 million square feet of housing, maybe more, depending on how large they make it. 10 million square feet, 10 million square feet is 43 and 1/2 football fields built at four stories. 43 and 1/2 football fields. You guys all know how big a football field. Think of 43 and 1/2 of them built four stories high. That's 10 million square feet. With that, there's no space or roads in between. That's just like bam. All right? And it's really, you know, like, the Transamerica Pyramid is 700,000 square feet. The Salesforce Tower is 1.6 million square feet. The Millennium Tower that's sinking is 1.151 million square feet. 10 million square feet is a lot. It's really a lot. It's basically not going to be livable. So I think you really need to consider what you want to put out there. I didn't see anything on the financials about what it would be if we put a solar farm out there, which would benefit the entire area. So, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. That's all the slips I have. Do we have any more? It's okay to bring them up to me as we get them because it starts running into the night. All right.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Karen Lentz, Brisbane resident. I'm here to show my support for the proposed language of the November 6 ballot measure. I'm particularly appreciative of the process of community input. Many of the community's members' concerns are represented in the wording of the proposed GPA. I understand that this is just the broad framework for moving forward, and that we will still go through the specific plan process, which will further involve the input of the community and will ultimately be approved by council. The 7 million feet in commercial space number may not be, in the end, what is built in the Baylands, but it will allow you the room to find the correct ratio of housing to commercial. I understand that this is a delicate balance, and I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Karen.
I just want to agree with most of the things, I echo most of the things my husband said, Greg Anderson, except when Kaiser Marston did their report, we did get some ideas about jobs, housing imbalance. And even the 4 million square feet is going to throw us further out of balance, so I can't see why the city wants to do 7 million square feet. To me, Sacramento, you, anybody who said that they are doing this for housing should be opposing this project as it's been proposed, this general plan amendment proposed, because this is going to exacerbate our jobs, housing imbalance. You exacerbate the jobs, housing imbalance, you stand to potentially drive the cost of housing up in the Bay Area even further. So why are we doing this? This is an amoral decision, in my opinion. I also want to point out that it is not, I believe there probably are people who are going to campaign against this. I'm considering it myself. However, it is not in the city's purview to campaign one way or the other. That would be illegal. And I hope that between now and November, you look, you have your staff, look at this proposal vis-à-vis all 15 housing bills. Because there's fun stuff in each and every one of those. I've read them. I can't keep them in my head. They all turn into alphabet soup. But I can tell you, I've read some pretty damn interesting things in there that I very much believe are going to come bite us in the rear. So, and I, you know, you guys didn't even know about SB 828, and I haven't heard anything more brought back about that. So this stuff is out there, and it's being, I feel like it's being ignored. At least, from my perspective as a citizen, it's not being addressed. I would very much encourage you to go back to where we started, to put in, if you're going to put in the housing, put in smaller commercial, and dedicate that really toxic land and high liquefaction on the east side, known high liquefaction on the east side, to solar panels. We may not be able to contribute much in the way of housing with that land. We've done a lot, as much as we could, in the city and Parkside. But we can contribute to the energy that this community needs to thrive and to have a strong economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. Well, the evening is finally here. Let's take a deep breath. I want to thank you all for your hard work and dedication, because I know it's been a long road. And I want to encourage you all to approve the general plan amendment for the Baylands and put this to a vote. And not just to approve it, to approve it unanimously. I want you to realize that approval does not mean capitulation. Capitulation to the developer, capitulation to the state. Rather, it is in the best interest of our city to approve this. What you're looking at is a responsible compromise, and that is necessary if we want to, as a city, retain control of the project. It is necessary for us to get the most environmental, environmentally protective project. It is necessary for us to get the most community benefits. And it is necessary to create a project that represents our city's values. So it's important to remember that when this goes to a vote in November, you're sending an important message, depending on how you vote tonight. It's not just like you vote, it gets marked in, you know, the record, and then it's done. This has to go to a vote of the people. And it is critically important that you send a unified message, a clear message, to the voters, so that they, in turn, can approve your vision. Now, Terry, Madison, perhaps other council members, I know you have some serious reservations about this project, and I understand that. At the same time, I really want to encourage you to think more broadly, and not just, you know, take the principled approach, but to really recognize that if you vote no tonight, that can have a serious detrimental impact on how the voters see it in November. It can send a mixed message to the voters. And if that happens, then it's more likely that if there's a no vote, then it would go back to the state, and we would lose all of that control. And as you know, as mayor last year, I met personally with Senator Hill. He showed me the draft legislation. We talked about it with staff. This is not some, you know, supposed threat. This is a real threat, and the community really needs to understand that. So if you want to do what's in the best interests of our city and our community, you have to really consider thinking about the big picture and voting yes tonight to ensure that it has the best chance of passing in November. So I encourage you to do the right thing and vote yes, to protect the best interests of our city and ultimately of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. That's all the slips I have. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Has not spoken. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands, any takers, so we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. We'll go to council questions. You know, this is a legal question. It came up, said the zoning map prevails over the general plan. I want to hear a legal.
No, the state law provides that the general plan is the constitution for all land-use decisions. It's your comprehensive, long-range development plan, and any action such as a specific plan or a zoning ordinance or a zoning map must be consistent with your general plan.
Okay. Last meeting, and this seems to come up again, you know, about how people are going to vote. Michael, I had asked, or somebody had asked a question, but you gave the answer about what happens if it fails. And you said, well, start over. Basically, we have a specific plan that was submitted by the developer that, you know, we're still processing it. And really, that's kind of like a short answer of, you know. And so I'd ask Clay, you know, to get something that, like, a little bit more in-depth on maybe the nuts and bolts of really what's going to happen. Maybe that's more of a political question, too, to Tom from, you know, from a Sacramento perspective. And you need a minute? I know it's kind of putting you on the spot here.
It's legal and political. I'll take a shot, and the city attorney can clean up the legal. The entire premise of what happened in 2017 related to an ongoing, then longstanding, and now even further longstanding housing crisis in the state of California that's particularly acute in certain urban areas, and, of course, it's particularly acute in this urban area due to both costs and lack of housing stock. There are all sorts of debates about whether San Francisco has units that are not filled or are filled that are under rent control. We don't have definitive answers to that. I'm just telling you the way Sacramento approaches it, whether you're in a senate hearing, an assembly hearing, listening to a floor debate, or meeting with members privately. There's a housing crisis. In politics, as I think all of us know, you need to illustrate the problem. And in 2017, the decision was made to illustrate the problem by taking a map that had appeared in the newspaper or a media publication, and showed this huge swath of land relative to the rest of the picture that was just south of San Francisco, that had been tied up for, depending on which version you believed, certainly over a decade, some said 16 years, some said 30 years. And it was the solution to put thousands of units of housing there. No reporting at that point on the remediation needs, the prior uses, et cetera. So that's why you got all the attention in 17. The goal in 17 was to not have a precipitous bill, as Mayor Lou referred, discussed, included in the housing package, which, as we discussed last week, everybody's got strong views on that. In my case, my bet is probably 40, 30, 30, that if had, had the city not responded with constructive discussions, there was a 40% chance it ends up in the housing package and gets signed into law, and that is a problem on many levels. So people called it a threat. And I gave you all that backstop so as to what happens now if the residents vote it down. The city, in about a year, City Council has taken a process that has taken over a decade, by any measurement, for a variety of valid reasons, and moved it forward within about a year. It has done so based on studies that have been in place and have been consistent with state law and standards and other applicable laws and standards, but it's primarily state law and standards. The city has negotiated aggressively to seek higher levels of remediation than are being guaranteed even adjacent to the parcel on the San Francisco County side. The city has, I won't laundry list them all, the city has gone out of its way to work with the developer and keep your representatives, Mr. Hill primarily, Senator Hill, but also Assemblymember Malone, informed and engaged on what you've been trying to do to move the process forward so that you are not in a position of being in Sacramento's crosshairs again. I think that that has been greatly successful in reducing the focus on the Baylands. I've had three calls in the last two days from elected officials, all asking, is the general plan amendment going to pass? And my response has been, I don't know the count, I don't know if it'll pass, but you really need to focus on November. It's a decision to put this decision to the voters based on the entire record that has been developed over many, many years and focused on in the last year. All of that is goodwill building with Sacramento. So is there a threat directly to Brisbane in 2019 or 2020, under a Newsom administration, presumably? There may be. How bad is the housing crisis going to get? How much tension's going to rise? We can't predict those things. And you still have a large swath of land. So the city's shown good faith, goodwill in moving forward, negotiated with all hands in a responsible way, consistent with the record, et cetera. So I do not think you're going to become the poster child and go through what you did in 2017 if the measure goes down. However, there are repeated assertions about the, what the housing package is going to do to Brisbane if you pass the amendment, and what the housing package means, and what subsequent bills like SB 28, which may pass, may not, we'll see, what that means. And at the end of the day, what it means is that if this project that has been in place now for years and being discussed, is the general plan amendment is defeated, the project is pulled, I'm just surmising steps that are logical, at that point, for a variety of reasons, you're going to have to debate which of these measures with aggressive controls over local government decisions on housing will apply to Brisbane and apply to the Baylands. So as I understand it, what the council's been trying to do is, rather than have to go through all those bills, which you've done, I'm well aware of that, I've seen the memos, we've written some of the memos, you've tried to say, okay, those are complicated laws. They take away our control over our own, use of our own land in our city. They change potentially the character of our city. Instead, let's tie to retain control, work with the landowner, work with the politicians who are passing those laws, and build goodwill so that we can have a development we can live with. And that, I think, will, that dynamic will continue if it goes down in November, the general plan amendment. But what will change is the potential that many of those laws will kick into place. So let me give you an example. SB 828, which is not effective state law yet, I want to stress that, okay? SB 828 is a controversial measure because what it says is, if you, as a city, and I'm just, I'm doing a very high-level skim, it gets very complicated, but what it says is, if you have not met your arena numbers, then essentially, you audit the city available land, whether zoned for housing or not, and you report what, where that land is going to be allocated to housing, ultimately zoned, in other words. You have to identify what land you're going to use for housing. Folks are going to come in, under the law, and be able to propose solutions, developments, but they're called solutions in the analysis, to that. Previously, the land may have been zoned business, commercial, whatever. You've now identified it as available for housing. Developers will come in and make proposals, and under SB 828, if it becomes law, you have very limited basis to say no. You have to accept the developer's proposal on most terms, because the goal is to put up more housing as fast as possible to address the housing crisis. Now, that doesn't do justice to 828. It gets very complicated, as does SB 35 and all the other ones we've talked about. So I know that's So I know that's a lot, but in shorthand, I don't think you're going to face a 2017 critical six or eight weeks, but I do think you're going to be looking at, how do these laws impact Brisbane? How much land does Brisbane actually have outside of the Baylands to meet arena requirements which are increasing, as you know, increasing dramatically? And in meeting those increased requirements, what are you going to be doing to the character of the town? Are you going to build in Crocker Park? Because you've got to meet a requirement, and you don't want to put it on the Baylands, even if it's been remediated? Those type of very tough questions are what the council's been dealing with, and those are the questions that will be back if the general plan amendment's voted down.
Thank you, Tom. Probably Lloyd, I think he went through this last week, and kind of, well, what happens? It does pass, you know, what are the next step of the process? And you gave a very eloquent talk about that, and, you know, maybe not have to repeat the whole thing, but certainly you probably could, because I think that needs to be heard, too, that by passing this, there's multiple steps that happen after that.
Yeah. And in adopting a general plan amendment for a site, it is a general plan policy that you're adopting, it is not intended to be a plan for development of a site. Just as when you adopted your general plan update 20-something years ago, you did not attempt to plan individual sites. What this does, what this amendment does, is it tells the developer, if you want approval of a specific plan, bring us a specific plan that meets these requirements. In terms of density, it says that we would accept up to 22, 1,800 to 2,200 dwelling units, we would consider up to 7 million square feet of commercial, and then the whole set of rules. You will bring it back, a specific plan, after you have identified the actual plans for remediation of OU1 and OU2. After, there is a plan for closure of the landfill pursuant to Title 27. And then, as a city, we will review your development plan in relation to those regulatory approvals as to how the site would be remediated and cleaned up. It also says you will bring back a plan once you have an assured water supply, and things are designed, and it's gone through its environmental clearances. In relation to geologic hazards, and, and it was mentioned earlier, liquefaction. We know that there is a liquefaction potential on the site, and what it says, the basic policies, the general plan, or the general plan amendment mitigation measures, is you will do a design-level geotechnical study, and buildings will be designed to meet the requirements of building code. And we will look at site by site, and the city engineer will look at the design of each individual building in relation to the soil conditions at each individual building, water, groundwater height, and potential for liquefaction, and then each individual building will be designed pursuant to applicable codes so as to be safe. So this is not a plan for development of the site, this is your policy statement to the current developer, or any subsequent developer, that says what they shall do before you approve a plan for the site. Because ultimately, it is the responsibility of the landowner and the developer to provide a plan for you to review, and that's what this is setting up. Your policy by which you would review a plan brought forward by a developer, by an applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Lloyd. Is there any council questions?
Can I follow up with that, on that same line with Lloyd, please? So, it'd be the responsibility of the developer to come forward with a specific plan that meets the general plan requirements. But that wasn't the case with this plan that was brought to us. They brought us a plan that didn't meet our general plan requirements, and still brought us a plan. So how would that differ going forward from in the past?
Okay. Partly, it is, one, you cannot prevent a filing of a request to amend the general plan. Any landowner has a right to request to amend the general plan, which is what occurred with the applications that are now in front of you. The difference here is going back to the existing general plan. It refers to, we need to see a specific plan to make a number of decisions regarding the site. It talks about what is the density of the site in terms of, well, the density of the site would be set based on traffic conditions, and if it's this kind of use, it would be this kind of density, or this amount of square footage, if it's that kind of use, it might be another one. And now we know 20-something years later, the assumption on the level of service standards that could be achieved, just background traffic, we can't achieve that. So it is a much more definitive statement that the city is making, that the city would make with this general plan amendment. You cannot prevent a future amendment, but I think, just from, realistically, this is very clear to any developer, any landowner, that would say, you are setting limits on what it is you are not willing to approve. And by doing that, I think, you know, how sensible would it be, right after making that statement for a developer, to come back saying, we don't care what you just said, we're going to propose something else? Not likely that you're going to change your minds that quickly, that you would change your minds, because far more study this time, and you now have a policy statement that you can stand by if, if an amendment would come back.
Karen?
Lloyd, there's been some confusion regarding the current EIR from various people that have spoken to me, and then versus what an EIR for development would be. Could you address that, please?
Sure. When you're doing an EIR, and there's various terms in sequoia and state law that you'll hear talk about, there's a program EIR, there's a project EIR, and basically, what you deal with in any environmental impact report, is you deal with the level of detail that is provided in relation to the project. So if you are doing, for example, an EIR on a general plan that is relatively general, you have maps that, as you'd had in 1994, that show whole properties in a single designation that don't look at individual site-specific issues that are policy-based, you are dealing in far less detail than you would be if you had an individual site. For example, if you had a building site at, oh, in any one location where somebody was saying, here is our project, here's how it's designed, I've got these 20 acres, and this is what it's going to look like. When you're dealing with properties of the size that we are, 600 acres, to put that in perspective, that is a, 640 acres is a square mile. So we're dealing in a very large area. You know, picture the, the size of, the Transamerica Tower was used, how easy it is to walk around the Transamerica Tower, to walk around one square mile is a four-mile walk. So we're dealing in very different scale, and it's very typical that you would start with a set of general plan policies, that are the city's policy, that says, Mr. Developer, you will bring us a plan that accomplishes these things, that meets these rules. Then, in this case, a specific plan, which is essentially the equivalent of a zoning action, with a lot more detail than what you would see in a zoning document. So you would see specific land uses laid out across the site, you would see configurations of open space, you would see regulations regarding building heights, setbacks, areas to be preserved, maintenance programs for preservation, and some of the things that planning commission originally noted that needed to be supplemented with the specific plan that you have right now. Discussion of phasing, how do we know over time, infrastructure will be adequate phase by phase? How do we know what the order of land development is versus provision of amenities? And all that would be part of a specific plan. You have, and those are also requirements of your general plan policies. So when you have all of that information, you are dealing in much more detail. If we had, for example, with the project definitive remediation plans, definitive, final characterization, ready for approval by a regulatory agency. If we had design of water delivery systems, that would show not only movement of X number of acre-feet per year, but how it would move, given certain days, you can get more. Where would water be stored? What does it look like at, as the water moves through the system? There would be much more detail in an EIR. And so that is the reason that we came to a conclusion, on really two major bases, that the EIR as it exists right now works for a general plan amendment, but there are, there is information that needs to be filled in before a specific plan would get approved. And the two that I just mentioned would be characterization of the site, both landfill and OU1, OU2, the remediation plans and landfill closure plan, and a number of the details that would bring a water supply system to, much closer to being able to sign a final contract. If we had all that information, you'd see a much more detailed EIR. If we had actual site plans, where a developer was ready to move forward with development on certain portions of the site, you would have more detail, but we dealt in this EIR with the level of detail we had. And remember also, while there was a specific plan for the applicant's proposal, the DSP scenario, and the entertainment variant, we also analyzed in the EIR two other non-residential scenarios, the community prepared plan, the CPP, and the recology variant, that had no specific plan at all. And what we had, and what we worked with in relation to the community prepared plan, those non-residential plans, was essentially a general plan, land use map, development statistics, and based on what we knew of the specific plan, what we knew of the land use plans for the non-residential scenarios, we were able to do analysis of, at equal level of detail. And so, in relation to the CPP scenarios, those details in terms of even what you see in the specific plan, did not exist, and a lot of it was presumed, and a lot of it, we came to the conclusion, was just speculation, which, you know, to get more detail, and which SEQUA says not to do. So, we're dealing right now just at a general plan policy level, and then you will see a specific plan come back, and you will see a, an EIR come back with that, because given what we have right now, given what that specific plan would say, I cannot see any findings that a council could responsibly make, that would say, we don't need a new EIR for a specific plan.
Thank you.
Any other council clarification, questions?
I have a couple of questions. This is for Stewart. So Greg Anderson mentioned de-annexation, which is something that we've talked at length about, but I'm curious, as a more specific answer from you, Stewart, regarding what that, what impact that would have on the city's revenues if we de-annexed all of the Baylands?
If we de-annexed all the Baylands, there would be the issue of the truck haul fees that we get off the Baylands, there'd be the issue of syrup point lumber, or sorry, Golden State lumber, which is on the Baylands. If you go all the way down to the Kinder Morgan tank farm, we have a business license against that. We also have a business license with recology. Probably when you add all those together, it's probably close to $5 million worth of revenues that we're receiving off of the Baylands at this point in time.
So, in relationship to the, all of the city revenues, would you say that that would be a large impact?
Yeah, I think overall, I think our general fund revenues are about 18 million that we projected for this upcoming year. So 5 million over the 18 million is just a little bit under a third.
Right. Okay, thank you. And I think it's important, I don't know who wants to tackle this one, to kind of just address, we talked about this in closed session, but to address further, why there is one sort of land use designation that's been used on the map, and what the thinking is behind doing that.
The idea of doing a land use designation means that there is one set of policies that applies to the entirety of the Baylands. If we go to two different land use designations, and, you know, there have been suggestions that we look at different designation for the portion that has residential than the portion that would not have residential, or to divide up in any other manner, you would have to look at, and we'll take this simpler way, if we had a designation that was the residential area, and then everything else, my first question to you would be, okay, now we know within the residential area, there are 1,800 to 2,200 dwelling units, how much commercial is permitted there, as compared to how much commercial is permitted in the balance? You would need to make that decision as part of this. We would need to look at, are there any other policies that would start affecting the residential portion differently than the rest? And it just makes for a far more complex general plan designation, and since you are going to public vote, if we get that mix wrong, the wrong square footage for the commercial, for the residential area, and the wrong square footage, you are bound by that split. There is no going back and saying, oh gee, we should have put, allowed for less commercial there, we want to move more into the other area. It just, it fixes it into place. I think, as you get more complex, with more different land use designations, you start having to outguess the ultimate land use plan that would come back. And at this point, I think the thing that makes most sense to do, given what this community has gone through trying to review a proposal by an applicant, I think, these, my planner's recommendation is, the best thing to do is set a series of rules for development within the Baylands, have an applicant come back with a plan that meets those rules, and then review that plan, rather than trying to outguess what a plan might be at the end. I think it's important to have those rules up front, not to have a general plan policy too open-ended, but also not to have it so specific, especially when you're going to vote, and your ability to change later are going to be constrained. So I think that we try to work with this amendment to that balance, to give you control that you would review an ultimate project without creating so much detail that you can find later, gee, we should have done this different, left it more open-ended.
Right. So it just adds for more flexibility, and prevents us from essentially backing ourselves into a corner, and then realizing later, we, we predicted the wrong balance of, you know, commercial to housing, or how much commercial we wanted on the east side versus the west side, and, and that sort of thing, correct?
Yes. And flexibility sometimes in planning gets a bad rap. We look at flexibility, oh, that just makes it open-ended. In some ways, when your policies, when policies of a general plan become too specific regarding a site, and when I've represented applicants, sometimes you get into this one. We have met all of your rules. What do you mean you don't like the project? So you want rules that are clear in terms of the ultimate outcome, but don't lay out such specificity that you're stuck with the results of anything that happens to meet them.
Right. Okay. So my next questions are probably geared towards Tom, and maybe if Michael wants to jump in also. I, I think it's important for us to, not to beat a dead horse or anything, but to beat a dead horse. We should, I think the community would benefit from one more explanation of SB 35, and how that does or does not impact us if the general plan amendment was passed.
SB 35 does not currently apply to the Baylands. One of the reasons is because of the current pending proposal by the developer. But there are multiple reasons why it does not apply. It doesn't apply unless you have objective zoning standards, or design review standards in place. We do not have those. In fact, some of that goes to what Lloyd was talking about, when you get into specificity later. It does not, SB 35 doesn't apply to hazardous waste sites. You have multiple designations within the property of hazardous waste site, I'm using the colloquialism, there are actually defined terms, but you have at least three examples, some people believe five examples. It doesn't apply. It doesn't apply for that reason. It also doesn't apply if 75% of the property is surrounded by urban uses. It, I'm sorry, only applies if 75% of the property is surrounded by urban uses. Nobody knows what urban uses means in this context, and the big question is, is the existing of the train track on a significant portion of the parcel? One, is that surrounding? It's in the parcel, so it's probably not surrounding, but that would be litigated. If it is determined to be surrounding, is the fact that you have trains running through it a urban use, when some of those trains are not related purely to, to moving people to and from work, et cetera? So, I could go on, those are the three sort of basic, but there are a series of five to seven arguments as to why SB 35 does not apply, even if the general plan is amended, period.
Okay. And I know that we have, you've gone over like consequences, what happens if it...
I might, can I add?
Oh.
Four law firms have looked at SB 35 because of the interest in the community independently. All four law firms came back with the same analyses.
Thank you.
And they didn't have the benefit of each other's analyses.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one would be kind of getting back to consequences. So you went over consequences of what happens if the GPA doesn't pass, and what happens in the case of it passing. And you took more of a political approach to that. Can you talk about consequences that we could face in terms of litigation if general plan amendment doesn't pass? All right, I don't know if strategically, I mean, if strategically you feel like you do not want to go down that road, we can bypass that question.
I prefer not to get into litigation risk. I, I will say that a factor in, that the council, in our view, needed to balance, because of doing a lot of work in this space, not just in California but elsewhere, is the cost of litigation. If you end up in a fight with a property owner, an activist group, multiple groups...
The state.
It's millions and millions of dollars because of the complexity of these disputes. This city does not have a reserve that adds up to paying millions and millions of dollars in legal fees. And that was a concern very early on, when we were just looking at the financial situation of the city versus the kind of things that were being threatened. A lot of those threats have gone away, as you know, at least for, hopefully, finally, but they may be back. But one suit can cost a million to $3 million quite easily because of the complexity of this, and it can go up much, much higher. And where was the money going to come from to defend the city?
Right. Especially if we get on a state level where there is, there is legislation that's introduced, and it does pass, or even if it doesn't, the amount of money that it would take to fight something, to fight the state on that type of legislation, would kind of cripple us financially, correct?
On the fact pattern of the Hill bill, if you looked at certain of the provisions, if you had to challenge those, it was such lack of clarity, we could see the bill running up very quickly, no matter, frankly, unless you had a, like a law school offering the work pro bono. But, this is, I'm just going to say it, we, we are recognized, our law firm, I believe, is in the top five nationally for pro bono work. We do a ton of it, but we don't do it in this space. Things get way too complicated, and you end up at a great deal of risk because of both the cost risk and the risk that you really don't know what you're going into when terms are undefined. And that's what the city faced.
Correct. So those are my questions for now. I don't know, Clark, if you want to maybe take a break? It looks like Terry needed one, and...
Not yet. I want to give other council members a question. Do you need a break?
No, I don't. I just didn't want her to miss the rest of the questions that were answered.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for you, Michael. So, i-if the voters approve the general plan amendment, does that guarantee the developer land use rights for the things that are in the general plan amendment?
No, the general plan policy are not vested entitlement rights. They provide a roadmap, presumably that the voters and the council would expect the developer to follow, but there, there would be other land use applications, such as a development agreement, which if that were approved, that would give the developer certain entitlements. But even a specific plan in and of itself does not give any vested entitlements. You have to take it one step further in order to get vested rights with respect to land use decisions.
Okay, so we have the general plan amendment, there's the specific plan, there's the development agreement, we also have the RAP, the remediation action plan. So all these things have to occur first, before the city would then apply zoning for various uses. And then, and is it the zoning that then gives the developer the land use rights?
Well, I think the contemplation here is that if there were a sufficiently defined specific plan for the entire site in conjunction with a development agreement, that that combination would essentially provide the land use entitlements that the, that the developer would rely on. It would certainly be not unusual then for there to be perhaps either zoning to be consistent with that, and/or subdivision maps, et cetera, that would follow. But I think that, to go to your question, it really would be the, the combination of the specific plan and the development agreement that would provide the entitlements that a developer could rely on, on a, on a future basis.
All right.
Now, that, not to say that there wouldn't have to be some other land use decisions, such as zoning, et cetera, but those would simply implement what the council had already approved with respect to the specific plan and the development agreement.
Okay. And then, in the general plan amendment, it talks about up to 7 million square feet of commercial development. So, does that mean that the developer automatically gets the 7 million square feet?
No, I think the, the idea is, the up to means exactly that, that when the plan comes, if the amendment gets approved and the plan comes forward, the council will have to decide how much is enough, what is warranted, you know, and that'll have to, there'll be some discretion involved in that, and some decision-making. But doesn't mean that it's, it, it doesn't say you shall get 7 million, it says up to.
Okay, and then the, the range of housing between the 1,800 and 2,200, the city is saying, "We will allow at least 1,800, but we're not guaranteeing that you can have up to 2,200."
That's correct.
Or you can have 2,200, there's...
It's, again, it's a range.
It's a range.
We're putting both a top and a bottom, I mean, the council and the voters would put a top and a bottom on that, but I think the, the expectation would be for at least 1,800 in that circumstance, since that's the bottom of your range.
Got it, got it. And then, you know, there's been a lot of questions in regards to, you know, the type of housing, you know, whether it's affordable, how, you know, dense is it, and things like that. That, that discussion happens after the general plan amendment is either approved, well, I guess it would have to be approved in November, so that's the next step.
Correct.
Right.
We would, I think the council would reasonably expect that the, when the developer comes in with a specific plan, it would indicate, you know, what the, the housing types would be, and the design, and things of that nature, for the council and the community to consider.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Karen, you have anything?
No, I'm done.
Terry, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing closed, council. I've got two slips, what's your pleasure?
Are they new people?
It's Deb Horn and Tony Varios.
I think since they're, since they haven't spoken yet, I think it would be appropriate. I would, do you need a motion to then to open up the public hearing for these two people?
Was that, what would be the procedure? Just a...
Sure, I mean, you could open, if you want to open the public hearing for those two speakers, you'd make a motion to do that.
Okay. You've spoken extensively, you've got two minutes.
Thank you, council members, once again, for your service. I, I'm a little heavy-hearted, because I so want to support what you're doing. I really do, and I'm close, and I think we're close. We're close. There's nothing in this amendment that supports our dire, affordable housing need. This housing will be so expensive with the added assessments, and the added taxes, and so I just wanted to say that. The other thing I just wanted to say too is, you know, last year I said, "How do we get air?" And I forgot the most important things, which is our Brisbane values and our legacy, and I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So this year is our 70th anniversary of our Lions Club, and an organization of volunteers who work tirelessly to serve the community. And Mountain Watch saved our mountain from becoming a sea of condos and continues to steward the mountain. We have Mothers of Brisbane, keeps our children safe, supports our community, G3, who magically appeared and made our, our Main Street beautiful. The Village, who's helping to keep seniors in place. And anyway, I could go on, but there's endless groups of volunteers here, and, and these are, we, the values that we love, and this is what we love about our community. We love Brisbane, we love to live here, we take care of each other. And I just have to say, that's how we got here. We even take care of dogs, and pets, and cats, and so I feel lucky to live here, and I feel gratitude for everybody who spent all this time looking at the baylands and considering everything, and I feel gratitude for the people who are watching at home, paying attention. And I, I think, I'm just, I'm worried that this baylands could...
Deb, I'm, I'm sorry, you're going to have to really get...
All right, I'm going to wrap it up. So I'm just worried it could destroy what we hold dear. So I, I, I agree with Greg. I agree that the zoning needs to be more specific, that if we could have like maybe one more week just to kind of wordsmith and get a little closer, I think we could get the community behind this, which is what we want to do. And, and that the zoning designation needs to be airtight. You came up with something with, you know, housing in one area and...
Deb, you're really going to have to get to the point.
Yeah, so...
Your time is up, okay?
Okay.
You've got the two minutes, so I don't want to get into...
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that we're almost there, but not quite.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, I know you haven't spoken yet on this, so you've got five minutes.
I didn't have any idea I was going to have that long a time, you're being so generous, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you haven't spoken yet. Deb spoke extensively last week, so...
Well, okay, I don't want to waste it. First off, I want to say that I think that when the city council hired Mr. Zola, it was the best move they made, because his advice has proven to be very artistic in terms of consulting. He seems to be putting out really good, solid advice that's meant to both provide flexibility for the city and defense, and I can't understate that. As far as what Mr. McMorris said, I don't dispute any of the facts that he's presented, but he also put out a lot of opinions, and those opinions are based on experience, that's valuable. But he said tonight, "There's a lot of unknown." So if this thing gets voted down, this general amendment is voted down, there's still a lot of room for positive things to happen afterwards. Maybe a lot more work for you, but that's what you signed on for when you, when you ran. So, I would say that this general plan amendment that's proposed, even if it's, I don't know if you got the final wording set up tonight, the only two things in it that I don't like are the map, which I don't agree with, where you would put housing, where you would, where you would allow housing, and the fact that there's housing in it at all. That's it. Otherwise, all the things that Lloyd proposed need to be in there anyway. You need to have a general plan amendment anyhow, in order to get those flexibilities and those protections in there. I just don't like the housing element of it. And it's a total fallacy, you know, that the, the state helped create this problem, the region helped create this problem, we're not going to solve this problem. If you were to give the developer a blank check, any developer, anything they want, they're not going to be able to build it for five, 10, 15 years anyway. So it's kind of a ridiculous situation. Mr. McMorris also mentioned building in Crocker Park. I can't tell you how many people in Brisbane, if you gave them the choice between the current proposal of 18 to 2,200 homes on the rail yard, as opposed to the same amount or more in Valley Drive, that wouldn't be built probably for the next 30, 40, 50 years or more, but they could be, if you just rezoned it all. I can't tell you how many people would vote for one versus the other, but personally, I can tell you that I think this plan that you're looking at is cutting your own throat, and it's like saying, "Well, we'll cut our own throats instead of have the state cut them for us." I don't agree with that at all, and it's not, I think you had also mentioned, I'm not sure when, there was something I heard about de-annexing. If you were to cut out part of the baylands, some of us discussed that in public meetings before, but we never had, we never had open disclosure of all the things that the city council has talked about, that are not a matter of privacy issues, and we haven't had a town hall meeting where we could sit here and debate them. If we were to cut out a small portion of the, the baylands up by the border, by the transit area, and say, "Hey, let's work out a deal with San Francisco, or preferably San Mateo County's Daly City, to put high density there that would satisfy the needs of the state, and not throw our self out of balance, give us credit for those units, even though they're not directly in our city." Maybe something like that could be worked out. A lot of things potentially could be worked out. When I spoke with Jerry Hill recently, he said, a lot of the ideas that I mentioned to him, he'd never heard, and he was, he used one word. He said, "I'm intrigued by those ideas." Now, what's that worth? The attorney would tell you, "Nothing." I didn't even have to look back there to see him smiling. But the fact of the matter is that we have a lot of options, and we haven't, to my knowledge, explored. Maybe you guys have explored them all, beat them all to death, and decided, no, none of them are any good. But I think you owe to the public to let them know that. Thank you. I'm voting no at this point.
Barbara, you had a question?
Yeah.
Give me 60 seconds. This is on SB 35?
Kind of. I'm just a little unclear, as if the developer has to come back with a new proposal, does that qualify as a new application? Because if it's a new application, then it's the laws in effect of the time of the application, so then all this stuff would kick in on the new application. I just don't know if it constitutes a new application or not.
Okay. Attorney, you want to answer that one?
That's one of the unanswered questions, but regardless, there are other conditions in SB 35 that make it inapplicable to the baylands.
All right. Do we need to re-close the public hearing? Okay.
Make a motion to close, re-close the public hearing. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, council discussion. I think we've asked all the questions, right?
Yep.
So, okay, what we got before us is Consider Adoption of Resolution Number 2018-61, certifying the final impact, environmental impact report, and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And Item B, which is Consider Adoption of Resolution Number 2018-62, approving the general plan amendment GP 1-18, and a statement of overriding considerations, and directing that the general plan amendment be put to the voters. be put to the voters November 6th, and adoption of general resolution 2018-63, placing the general plan amendment 1-18 on November 6, 2018 ballot for voter consideration. How does council wish to proceed?
Maybe we should just take one at a time, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, the first one, Resolution Number 2018-61, refers to certifying the final environmental impact report and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And I would make a motion to move that forward.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There are motions, seconds on the floor, any discussion? Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment on this, that while I know there are data gaps in the EIR, the, because we're doing it for a program, EIR, and having it be overarching, or excuse me, a general plan, EIR, and I think that we've addressed as many of the concerns that we can in the mitigations for that, to allow for additional information to be gotten and obtained and applied to the site before all the impacts are known. And so, with that, I do recommend that we approve that, because I think it's the first step in this process that we have to do.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Comes to Resolution 2018-62.
All right.
A pleasure.
So, the second resolution, Resolution Number 2018-62, is for approving the Baylands General Plan Amendment, GP 1-18, and a statement of overriding considerations and directing that the general plan amendment be put at the November 6, 2018 election. So, this, which is different than Item C, which is moving forward the general plan amendment language that goes on the ballot for voter consideration. So, I know in council discussions, you know, it seems that we're in favor of moving forward with the housing portion of the general plan amendment with 1,800 and 2,200 housing units, but perhaps maybe have a little bit more discussion on the commercial side, and perhaps, yeah, just having some discussion with that before we move forward.
So, are you suggesting voting on splicing that vote out to vote on housing and then vote on square footage of commercial? Or are you suggesting just having more of a conversation? Or are you suggesting...
Well, you know, thank you for the clarification, Councilman Davis. Yeah, I think perhaps, you know, splitting the vote on those two items. And if, but if councilmen want to discuss, say, the commercial side, that they can.
Can I ask, city attorney, you wish to, is that...
Well, if I'm understanding correctly, what the council member plans is suggesting is that what you could do is, if there seems to be some idea that for the council to consider with respect to Item 2 of the general plan amendment, to vote as a motion just with respect to the housing element or the housing component of this, and take a vote on that, and then there could be a separate motion slash vote with respect to the amount of commercial. And then, when that is completed, then the council will need to take action on the overall resolution in terms of approving the general plan amendment. And depending on where the votes are with respect to those two separate motions, that would then be embodied into the overall resolution. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That's what you're suggesting? Council will agree with that, that methodology?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's proceed forward.
Okay, so, I recommend adopting Resolution Number 2018-62 regarding the 1,800 to 2,200 housing units for the Baylands General Plan Amendment, GP 1-18. Do I need to read out the rest of it? Okay.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Can we discuss for a moment?
Yeah, we can discuss.
So, I wanted to make the point that I think that this is the most prudent thing to do for us, because we need to have the housing in the general plan to protect us and to get the cleanup that we need on the site. And I know that it's a bitter pill for many of us, but the threats of the housing bills and the pressures from Sacramento are very real, and they will affect that we have more control on the cleanup and the ultimate use there of the property. And so, that's why I would recommend, make a recommendation to this council that we approve that portion of the general plan amendment.
Okay. Anybody else speak on this?
No.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, part two.
Okay. Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-62 regarding the up to 7 million square feet of commercial space for the Baylands General Plan Amendment, GP 1-18.
Do we have a second?
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll second it.
A motion and a second, council discussion.
Am I the only one? That wants to comment? I honestly think that we are trying to put too much commercial out there. And so, I was happier with the original plan where we had 4 million, and then 4 million plus 500,000 of the hotel. But I understand some of the other councils' reasoning for wanting to have excess funds to help with other things in the city. But I just wanted to put out there that I was more comfortable with the 4.5 million that we had been at before.
I'll make a comment. So, my reasoning on this is, for financial reasons, we have a lot of capital projects that we can't fund right now. So, from my perspective, bringing extra dollars into our coffers to fix things around Brisbane that have been unfunded for many years is the reason that I like the higher level on the number for the...
I'm gonna make a comment for the last one.
I'd like to make a comment. I was in favor of 5 million as well, but there was a council meeting that we had, and there was, you know, considerable support for increasing that amount, which made me revisit the issue. For me, although it is partially financially based, I would like to see us, you know, for doubling the size of our town, at least to have as much financial benefit for doing that as possible. But for me, it really boils down to planning the project. And we need to have a project that encompasses both the east and west side. And in order for that to happen, the level of commercial and the amount of square footage is important. That's also why I considered moving the housing down to Main Street, because we need to cover more surface area in order to ensure that the unregulated dump is properly cleaned and that there is the incentive to do that, because that will be the site of commercial buildings in the future. And so, for me, it's important to have a project that encompasses cleanup on the entire site, instead of having it be a smaller project that can all be accomplished on the west side, leaving the east side for a later day. So, for me, that's why I adjusted my viewpoint. It was also, I took into account our budget meeting that we had, and it was, I realized how much we have in unfunded liabilities and how many capital improvements we need to make that we do not have the money to do so freely right now. So, all those things, to me, are important elements in this project and the way that we plan for this project. So, that's why I'm in favor of up to 7 million. That doesn't mean that the project will have 7 million square footage of, square feet of commercial, but it does allow us a little bit more flexibility. So, those are all my comments.
Thank you. I need to say this, for years and years, you know, I've been saying this project is regional, a regional project. It was always my hope that we never put housing out there on the Baylands, you know, just for a lot of reasons that people brought up. But, you know, there's a lot of things that unfolded that, you know, caused where we have to do, and reality checks in. But from a regional part, is, I've always said, you draw a circle around the Baylands and up above it into San Francisco, and this goes to the jobs-housing balance. You have 1,600 to 1,700 units at Slade Lock with 40-something thousand square feet of commercial, which would be retail, which are low-end paying jobs. People are not going to be buying those units, so it's not going to be a live-work area. You have 900-plus units going up in the Sunnydale area, in addition to what's currently there. Very low retail, no retail, maybe a local store, that's it. So, people are going to be going to work somewhere from there. You have Executive Park, which UPC owns. 1,800 units approved, and what, 300,000 square feet of commercial, maybe more retail, but not a whole lot of high-end jobs. So, again, those folks will not be buying those units. And then you have Candlestick Park area, where it was zoned for 7,000 to 8,000 housing units in a shopping center. Again, retail jobs, $15 an hour, people are not going to be buying those homes. They're going to be going to work somewhere else. And so, 7 million square feet provides, I think, for the region, a better opportunity and for people to go to not travel that far. And you get a bus rapid transit in there and all these other transit amenities that we're looking at, then you might have a true transit-oriented project that is a regional project. And that's my basis for wanting to go to 7 million square feet in addition to city fiscal. And, you know, for the city's future, I think the city council needs to at least be prudent from that aspect, you know, because the commercial really benefits the city much greater, so... Anybody else? Anything?
I'm done.
Okay, so, with regards to commercial, we do have a motion and a second. And, okay, so, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Support or one? All right, next one?
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is where I'd like to talk to the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because this is, you know, this is the resolution that puts the general plan amendment language on the ballot. And, you know, first of all, I just want to thank all the people who have provided, you know, testimony and researched this, you know, up and down throughout the years. I mean, this has been a very many-year process, and the amount of public participation has been incredible. I know there's been some folks who are saying, "Hey, why are we rushing this?" We're at that time, we're at that point to make a decision, but we're not making the final decisions. Those are going to happen later on down the line. What we're doing is we're putting forward a general plan amendment that provides some perspective, right? Some, as Lloyd has said, some rules, you know, some lines to work with then. You know, items like, you know, what type of housing, and the style, and affordability, and transportation, and, you know, education, and, of course, open space. And, you know, people have talked about, you know, always wanting to have, you know, energy-positive development. And we should be working really hard to try and achieve that. There's many different routes from which to go. You know, having a zero-carbon development, zero wasting of water. I mean, there's, there are opportunities for us if we maintain local control. And that's why it's so important that we get behind this general plan amendment and that we vote for it, and then we pass it. We already know what the alternative is. We have a specific plan from the developer, that's got 4,400 units in it. I don't think anyone in this town wants that. We are making a big sacrifice, and everybody up and down the state knows it. There is no city that's doubling the size of its population. We are doing it, that's huge. The commercial space is equivalent to what already exists in Brisbane, and that provides the right balance, right? We're not going to be an Oyster Point Cove with that dense development that's going on in South City. We're doing something that's more like Sierra Point. So, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and, you know, you know, I just, again, I just want to applaud everybody for this, against it. You know, that's what community is about, is having the discussion. And I also want to thank my council colleagues. I know this has been tough for all of us. And, you know, we've, we've worked hard to look at all the issues. I mean, we've, everything that you've assessed, you know, that you said that we should be looking at, we've looked at them all. And we're putting this forth because we feel it's in the best interest of our city, not just for now, but in the long term. So, with that, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-63, placing the general plan amendment JP, GP-1-18 on the November 6, 2018 ballot for voter consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay. You have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just as a clarification on that resolution, in Section 10, dealing with the SEQA, I've added a sentence there that I provided to the council, just an introductory sentence that says, "Submitting this measure to the voters is a project under the California Environmental Quality Act." Just to make it clear that this is considered a project under SEQA, but no additional environmental work will have to be done to adopt the resolution, because the council's already certified the EIR. But we wanted to include that in this resolution, just to be on the safe side.
Yes.
Yes.
Terry, your second includes that, that statement?
Sure.
Okay. Just a W on my name. W on my name. I'm gonna go to sign the official. I gotta start with the W. Okay. Just one question before, we have a motion and a second. One question I have, because it did come up, I think Deb asked about affordable housing. What is our, or did I say 15%?
15%.
15%.
15% of affordable housing, okay. All right, so, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I would like to say something. And I'll make it brief. I want to echo a lot of what Cliff has said, and I want to thank my colleagues for all their time and dedication and hard work. You know, it's been a lot of sleepless nights that we've all experienced. that we've all experienced, and I'm really proud of the work that we've put in and how important I know that Brisbane is to each and every one of you. And while it's been such a difficult process to go through, I would not, would not have chosen better, better partners to do this with. And of course, also acknowledging, you know, Lori for, for her work in this as well. And I want to remind the public, you know, the work is not done. We have the specific plan that will come forward if the GPA is passed. And that's really where we're going to get into the nuts and bolts of a lot of the things that have been raised, like solar farm and affordable housing, density, aesthetics, trails and bike paths and all those things that really make a community a community. And so I'm looking forward to hopefully continuing that process with you and getting a lot of that feedback from members of the community that have been so involved and hopefully, you know, new people as well that will be inspired to get involved and give their opinions. And of course, just because we are moving forward with putting this on the ballot, doesn't mean that it's guaranteed to pass. Everyone has their own opinion. And we want to welcome everyone to come out in November, really make your opinions heard through vote. And I think that that's the best way, since this is such a considerable issue, really is the best way to move forward is to make sure that, you know, the majority is, is a majority vote. So anyway, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with everyone and, you know, my, my door is always open. If anyone wants to continue to have these conversations, I'm happy to schedule one-on-one meetings, phone calls, emails, whatever, whatever you want to do. But thank you so much for all your work that you've put into this. And with that, I will.
Call the question?
Yes.
That really did.
Oh, yes.
We asked, yeah.
A motion and a second. Anybody else wishes to call a question? Okay, so, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. That brings us to Item 9, which is public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a, can we take a break?
Okay, we are at.
Thank you.
Time to end the meeting. Terry, what's, I know you're having a rough night here. So go to 11?
Yeah, that'll be the end.
Okay. All right. So let's make a very short break and then come back at 11, okay? Or, I mean. Come back and go till 11.